Right.
And you, please go ahead and take the role as well, Madam Clerk.
Yes, yes ma'am. Councilmember Days.
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Present.
Councilmember Fitch.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Tracus. Councilmember Harder. And Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please proceed to read the comments into the record.
Madam Clerk, or Madam Chair, sorry, continuing. I am emailing you today for the very first time to strongly encourage the council to reject Bills 220, 222, and 223. As a mother of two children in the Rockwood School District, our family, like countless others in the county, will be sending our children back to an in-person classroom setting for the very first time since March. It is a decision made by weighing several factors, one of which was lowering the cases of COVID-19 in our community. These decreases would not be occurring without the science-based measures implemented by the County Board of Public Health, specifically universal masking policy. The opportunity to return to the aspects of life that are "normal" will only be maintained by following the very simple public safety measures the community has been following. By passing Bills 220, 222, and 223, at a time when we are finally moving forward seems unnecessary and nothing more than pandering to a very vocal minority in the community. We will successfully resume a cautious normal by following science and evidence-based solutions. It is because of the public health policies during this pandemic that we feel comfortable allowing our kids to participate in their respective sports, supporting local businesses and restaurants, and as of this week, sending our kids back to in-person school. Unfortunately, lifting these guidelines or altering their enforcement will prevent us from doing any of this. Councilmembers, please don't slow the community's progress by passing these bills. Sincerely, Kate Pennell. From Megan King. As a voter in St. Louis County, I ask you to consider the following. Please vote in support of Bills 220, 222, and 223. We cannot allow one person to rule our county. If these bills fail and Page does not lose his one-man power to make laws, our county, our families, and our businesses all lose. The real issue here is not whether masks should be worn or not, but how the power to make that decision is apportioned. Should one individual have the power to make that decision on his or her own, or should that person be held accountable by the county council with appropriate checks and balances in place? How does wanting that oversight equate to wanting to kill grandparents and grocery store workers? Frankly, it doesn't, and it's deeply disturbing that anyone would imply that. Whether the county executive is a Democrat or a Republican, they should have those checks and balances in place. The residents of St. Louis County deserve that, so please vote in favor of Bill 222 and 223. The scam has gone on long enough. From Kelly Hickenbottom. I'm writing to show support for Bills 222 and 223 put forward by Tim Fitch and Mark Harder, requiring council approval during states of emergencies, and I'm asking you to support them too. This pandemic is unprecedented, and unfortunately, it's become apparent that the county executive Sam Page has entirely too much individual power as to how the county functions during these state of emergencies. All of the councilmen and councilwomen were elected to represent their districts. All decisions and mandates made during these times should be made by the entire council, not just one person. Sam Page cannot have complete control over all actions and mandates made for all 990-plus thousand county residents. One person should not decide where the $173 million of CARES Act money is distributed. The recently released state audit found Stinger was enabled by the council, "for oversight that allowed the former county executive Steve Stinger to pull off his corruption schemes." Sam Page called out Stinger for his behavior, but now won't agree to oversight, and the board keeps voting for no oversight. I'm a resident of Lisa Clancy's district and would like my opinion heard by my county council representative. Politics start at the local level. While I'm an avid voter, I did not pay much attention to what happened in these weekly St. Louis County Council meetings. Let me tell you, my eyes, along with many others, have been open regardless. My name is Adam Mole. I'm in support of Bills 220, 222, and 223. Contrary to misinformation in the public, these bills aren't about mask mandates. The bills are about offering checks and balances to the executive branch. Vote yes on these bills and restore democracy to our county. Thank you. From Eric Reynolds. I'm writing today to express my overwhelming support for the bills limiting the unchecked and supposed state of emergency mandate power currently being abused by interim county executive Page. Also, I would like to thank Councilwoman Clancy for the most laughable commentary of recent memory in the most recent meeting. Now I know why she continues to stall all efforts to reopen council meetings to the public, because I'm sure it would be hard for her to hear actual laughter coming from the public to her sanctimonious lectures. In what amounted to a scene ripe for Saturday Night Live skit, it was easily the most cringe-worthy moment in these meetings in 2020. We've gone from tracking deaths to hospitalizations to cases in the never-ending attempt to spew some statistic to incite fear in the general public. To give credit where credit is due, it's by and large worked up till now. However, people are finally waking up to this ongoing deception, and for fear mongers like Councilwoman Clancy, it must be frustrating. Hiding behind comments that reference overwhelming data that they never seem to share is par for the course of Clancy's hypocrisy. There is no longer a true state of emergency in St. Louis County, as indicated by Clancy dragging President Trump into her diatribe last week. What we actually have is a politically motivated suppression of our constitutional rights disguised as a public safety concern by opportunistic demagogues like Clancy and Page. From Jill Guilfoyle. Please vote for Bills 222 and 223. The American Constitution provided for the federal government a system of checks and balances. Sadly, the St. Louis County government does not currently have a system like that in place. This is how corrupt executives like Steve Stinger and Sam Page are allowed to get away with as much corruption as they have. I find it curious that Sam Page set on CARES Act money and loosens restrictions just prior to the election. I find it curious that Sam Page engages in the service of a company to help with the election that has been mired in election fraud and ballot harvesting scandals. I find it interesting that Sam Page is interested in defunding our police when the best-case scenario means the loss of 100 police officers. I find it interesting that senseless edicts preventing youth sports to happen and schools to resume are magically lifted just prior to an election. The public does not trust this man. We did not trust Stinger. Checks and balances are necessary. From Carla Valenti. This year has been full of challenges for everyone. When the stay-at-home orders went into place last March, we didn't have much information on the coronavirus. What we thought would be a two-week shutdown has become a seven-month nightmare. Businesses, jobs, education, mental health, preventive health screenings, and much-needed surgeries, sports, scholarships, relationships, and childhood memories all lost these past seven months. The county executive may have had good intentions in shutting the county down last March, but now we know the more the ongoing shutdown no longer makes sense. Are there clear, measurable goals and objectives to open the county? What is the timeline to open back up and get our kids back into school? Why would anyone be against a check and balance system for our local government? Why would we reelect anyone on the council not willing to do what is in the best interests of the citizens that elected you? We need you to work together to get our economy open, bring jobs back, kids in school, all sports opened back up, with ridiculous mandates, just to name a few. Safety measures are in place. Stop politics and do what's right. Provide the numbers to exclude 19-year-olds as they are college students. Vote yes on Bills 222 and 223 to put checks and balances in place for the current and all future county executives. Be transparent, work together, and stop trying to bulldoze your personal agenda by using obscure grants, personal attacks, destruction, and fear tactics. We see you. Excuse me. From Beth Nelson. I'm writing to encourage you to vote for Bills 222 and 223. The hope is that the power of the current county executive or the next county executive will be limited, so there will be necessary oversight of the county executive by you, the county council. These issues have been divisive with lots of name-calling, and I just don't understand why the county executive oversight by the county council is a bad thing. Please help get these bills passed and then get to work immediately on garnering the necessary votes to override what will likely be a veto by the county executive. Again, does anyone else find it ridiculous that the man whose power we're trying to limit has the ability to veto the bills that will limit his power? Thank you for your diligence and consideration. Best regards. I'm writing in opposition to Bills 220, 222, and 223. We need the necessary mandates to remain in place as long as the experts advise. Enforcing the council to renew them every two weeks would be a waste of time and resources. The mandates and policies should be revisited when it is deemed appropriate by scientists and public health officials, not by a ticking timer. Thank you for your work to keep our community safe. Regards. Maggie Grzowski, I hope I pronounced your last name correctly. From Amber Kennedy. I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for letting me know how racist and privileged I am. Without you, how would I know that I have it so good? The food pantry has had food my kids -- let me start that again. The food pantry has had food my kids have actually wanted to eat lately, so I guess that makes me privileged. The fact that I have someone who will take me to the pantry, I'm sure, makes me racist. I guess I'm also racist and privileged in the fact that I'm happy my kids have a back-to-school plan and that they can now play their sports, which will help them feel somewhat normal. With my kids back on track and feeling better in school, in their lives, I can now pick up a third job to ensure that I can hopefully have a decent holiday season. Don't you, Lisa, ever call me a racist or privileged again. You need to check in the mirror first to see someone who meets that criteria. We don't need you to cause more disruption than you already have. Next time you go on vacation to Colorado, which, by the way, my kids have never been on vacation, but I'm the privileged one, to make sure you count your lucky stars that you have so many opportunities in your life, many of us in the county don't have those same privileges. From Joshua Baker. I'm writing to urge your support for Bills 220, 222, and 223. The data showing how COVID policy has been politicized with not only government response, but even public attitudes and fears bearing widely based on one's political persuasion is simply tragic. Certainly, there is enough blame on both sides contributing to the politicization of COVID, but the ultimate cost will be measured in lives, livelihoods, and in mental and physical health outcomes even unrelated to COVID. I understand that any government policy response to an emergency carries potential for politics, especially in today's fractured culture. The answer is not to centralize power in the hands of one individual, but rather respect the separation of powers and the role of our duly-elected representatives. Moreover, the supermajority requirement ensures that all members on both sides of the aisle are motivated to seek honest discussion leading to consensus and simply raw political force. We are in desperate need of unity, especially in matters that impact each of us so greatly on a day-to-day basis. Please support Bills 220, 222, and 223 as a demonstration of your commitment to seeking consensus and dialogue, both now and in the future. Thank you. From Sarah Meyer. To start, I want to clarify the misrepresentations that have been unfairly put upon myself and many others. I am not a member of the Rockwood School District. I am not a member of the GOP. I am not a racist, and I have no privilege to check myself against. I am simply a citizen of St. Louis County who is extremely disappointed and frustrated by many things happening in our local government. I'm even more disgusted by the condescending and unprofessional behavior from disruptor council members. So here goes. I'm frustrated by the lack of oversight in the county executive position and the fact that certain council members are actively fighting against said oversight or checks and balances. I'm frustrated with the abuse of power by an individual who wasn't even elected to his position. I'm frustrated with the inconsistent application of sports and school restrictions with no data disclosed to back up these mandates. I'm frustrated with the lack of defined, measurable goals to open our county businesses and schools back up. I'm frustrated with the suspense of my constitutional rights as a tax-paying citizen. I'm frustrated that even the World Health Organization has now spoken out against lockdowns due to the destruction they cause in our communities, yet our local government still cannot swallow their pride and relinquish their power. I'm frustrated that despite our elected representatives listening to their constituents and introducing Bills 220, 222, and 223, certain council members are manipulating their intentions, making false accusations against said constituents, stereotyping an entire group, silencing our voices, and turning everything into hate speech. I guess it's easy to make assumptions about others when you are so closed-minded that you're not willing to truly listen to what they're saying. Shouldn't elected officials be serving their citizens instead of pushing their own personal political agenda? I would like to encourage the council to vote yes on Bills 220, 222, and 223. Listen to the voices of so many citizens who want checks and balances in our local government. Do not fall for the false accusations and blatant gerrymandering behavior of certain council members. Thank you for your time, Sarah Meyer. From Barb and Lance Tyson. This is our week four for us on letter writing to the council. I urge the council members to pass the bills limiting the power of our county executive the past 15 days of an emergency order. If the government can suspend your rights anytime if something is a crisis, you don't have rights, you have permissions. Give us our rights back. This is not about wearing a mask. This is about having checks and balances with our county government. We currently have no checks and balances with our county government, and all the power is given to the county executive. It is about parents having the ability to make choices as parents. It is about small businesses having the ability to make decisions about their businesses. We are not a group from Rockwood School District, far from it. We are a group comprised of like-minded individuals from all over St. Louis County with diverse backgrounds and diverse demographics. Council Chair Clancy's lecture to the council last week was again inappropriate and not factual to any of the issues that have been brought before you. Her rhetoric is divisive, childish, and disrespectful. She acts like a spoiled brat who is not getting your way and does not act as an elected official should act. Please pass Bills 222 and 223. Sincerely. From Mary Gross. I am opposed to the three bills that limit the authority of the St. Louis County Department of Public Health to make sustained decisions about public health issues. The expertise for directing medical policy and actions for the county is within the purview of Dr. Dusset. As the chief medical officer is qualified to assess and prescribe pandemic mitigation processes. As a medical doctor, her education includes public health training at St. Louis University College of Public Health. It seems to be a fitting preface to the task at hand. It is serendipitous that the current county executive is an MD as well, who is already schooled in medical sciences and appreciates the value of evidence-based practices. In the current pandemic, mask-wearing, distancing, crowd limits are data-driven tools that limit the spread. I prefer science-based action, as these two leaders seem highly qualified. Please think about the frontline workers who come in contact with the public daily, such as grocery store workers. Many are not high-wage earners and need their employment and their health. Masks offer a level of protection for them. Consider healthcare workers who put their lives on the line, often with inadequate PPE, which is infection control 101. Think about the overwhelming St. Louis-area healthcare system I feel certain that you do not want and on your wall speak. The case count in St. Louis County is leveling. The mandate for masks, social distancing, and crowd limits appear to be effective. Even rural Missouri is now becoming infected. There are a few mask-wearers there, as well as disregard for limits on crowds. Please do not limit the authority of the experts to guide us through this historic time. You have an ethical duty to protect. We are depending on you to help us through this. And from Tom Paul. I'm writing to ask that you please pass Bills 22 and 223 to provide oversight of the St. Louis County Executive. Sam Page informed us that all but $10 million of the CARES Act money has been allocated. So where would the transparency list of who got all the money? Where is the transparency promised in your campaign? Should we ask Lisa Clancy's brother? I could not believe the accusation made at last week's council meeting that everyone who was sending comments to the council meetings wants to kill grandparents and grocery store workers by not wearing masks, by asking for bill approval for Bills 222 and 223. Should a single individual have the power to make that decision on his or her own, or should that person be held accountable by the county council with appropriate checks and balances in place? How does wanting that oversight equate to wanting to kill grandparents and kill grocery store workers? Shame on anyone on the council who uses scare tactics to imply that. Whether the county executive is a Democrat or Republican, they should have those checks and balances in place. The St. Louis County residents deserve that, so please vote in favor of Bills 222 and 223. Thank you.
This is from Wendy Baker. Dear council members, I'm writing in support of Bills 220, 222, and 223. Every day, new evidence emerges demonstrating the myriad ways in which our families and communities have been damaged, in many cases irreparably so, by the lockdowns and restrictions imposed in an effort to slow the spread of the COVID virus. Data now shows that our treatment, quote-unquote, was in many cases worse than the disease, exacerbating illnesses in the fields of mental health, cancer, heart disease, and many others, while at the same time providing very little, if any, overall benefit with respect to COVID. Emergency action to flatten the curve and protect hospital capacity was warranted back in March. But as hundreds of leading public health experts and epidemiologists recently explained in the Great Barrington Declaration, we've done more harm than good over the past several months. And until we adopt an approach that protects the vulnerable while at the same time pursuing herd immunity, we are only postponing deaths, not preventing them. All this is to say that the power of lockdowns and widespread restrictions that jeopardize the financial, mental, emotional, and physical health of our communities must never be concentrated in the hands of one individual. It ought never be politicized. Emergency powers are intended to be just that, for emergencies. Once the initial emergency is passed, the ongoing policy must be determined by the duly-elected legislative body. Bills 220, 222, and 223 ensure that the people have the chance to be heard and that the separation of powers is preserved in our government system. Please vote yes on Bills 220, 222, and 223. This next one is from Amy Cordis. Dear council members, I respectfully ask that the council reject Bills 220, 222, and 223 as they are a politicization of public health measures designed to protect our community. I urge you to continue the measures that have been put into place to protect the health of St. Louis County residents. Our son has an immune deficiency and is at significant risk of contracting COVID-19. As a result, our entire family has been isolating since mid-March in an effort to keep him safe. Last week, our daughter and I visited a store for the first time since we began isolate, and we were impressed by the diligence of the staff and other customers. Everyone was fast and maintaining social distancing so all could stay safe. There is broad consensus from both medical and public health experts on the importance of universal masking, and states with mask mandates have exhibited slower growth rates and prevented thousands of COVID-19 cases. As business owners, we understand and empathize with struggling businesses. In truth, the only way our economy can begin to recover is to ensure that everyone can patronize businesses safely and that the businesses are supported by county government with consistent public health mandates. By lifting the mandate, the county is placing businesses in an untenable position, and I'm concerned that with the government requiring safety precautions, businesses will not be able to enforce masking and other safety measures within their establishments. We've seen examples across the country of both physical and verbal abuse business owners and employees have endured when they independently require masking. None of us want to create an environment for that to occur. The goal is to do what is in the best interest of the public as a whole, and the best way to ensure our economy can thrive throughout the pandemic is to continue these public health mandates. This isn't a political issue unless you choose to make it so. This is a public health crisis, and as such, we should heed the guidance of public health officials and the medical community. Masking is a simple and effective means of containing the spread of COVID-19 and is crucial to keeping St. Louis County residents safe and well. I strongly urge you to vote no on Bills 220, 222, and 223. This next missive is from Amanda Schreiber, and Ms. Schreiber has presented a poem to the council members. All the people in the county liked freedom a lot, but Sam Page, the executive, for some reason, does not. Sam Page likes restrictions. He likes making rules. He likes to close parks, close gyms, and the schools. But I think that the most likely reason of all may be that his heart is two sizes too small. Then he got an idea, an awful idea. Sam Page got a horrible, awful idea. He packed up their sports, their schooling, their joy, their fun, and their teams, a political ploy. Then he growled with his fingers nervously drumming, "I must find some way to keep parents from coming. They're just waking up. I know what they'll do. Their mouths will hang open a minute or two. They'll watch my address. They'll balk and they'll gasp. They'll know that I have them wrapped up in my grasp. And then, oh, the noise, oh, the noise, noise, noise. There's one thing he hates, all the noise, noise, noise. But oh, the response wasn't sad. Why, this sounded loud, and it sounded mad. Every Who in the county, the tall and the small, is riding without reservations at all. But you know Sam Page was smart and so slick that he thought up a lie and he thought it up quick. He said, "Who's hate masks. They don't care about health. They care about hate, racism, and wealth." And when he thought the county were home with their fear, we came out in droves. For our children, we'd cheer. For the Who's in the county without previous action partook in elections despite lies and distraction. And what happened? Well, in the county, they say that Page's power shrunk three sizes that day. They're casting their ballots," he snarled with a sneer. "Next month is November. It's practically here." Then the county thought of something we hadn't before. Maybe some execs listen, and they care a bit more. "We'll hold up the county. We brought back their joys. We brought back your shorts, your sports, and your schools, girls and boys. Without bigotry, racism, privilege, or hate," Without bigotry, racism, privilege or hate, we'll speak for our children, our country and state. And then the true goal, it finally did click, is to vote the Grinch out and to vote him out quick. This next communication is from Paula Harden. Please vote yes for bills two-twenty-two and two-twenty-three introduced by Councilman Mark Harder and my Councilman Tim Fitch to remove unlimited power from the Health Department and Sam Page. A recent article in the St. Louis Post Dispatch from the local six-five-five united food and commercial workers claim, quote, "The bills could result in the termination of the countywide mask mandate", which directs businesses to deny, preach to customers who refuse to wear face coverings, end quote. This article is only about fear-mongering and is an attempt to keep Page in power instead of bringing balance back to the council. Too many businesses have closed permanently due to Sam Page and Health Department overreach. Bring back, back. Vote yes for bills two-twenty-two and two-twenty-three. Following is from Bo Gorgier or Gorgor, I apologize if I mispronounced that. If ordered by the Health Department, masks should be worn. My wife and I have underlying health concerns. We always wear our masks when we go to the grocery. It's not a hardship. Please concern the health of others. The wearing of a mask is not an inconvenience for us and we're seventy-two years of age. It's been shown that masks are effective. We'll never get rid of COVID as long as people don't wear masks. Ask the people of Jefferson and St. Charles Counties. Finally, if a little nine-year-old boy in Nazi-occupied Warsaw during World War II can hide in a neighbor's attic for two years without ever coming down to see the light of day, then thoroughly disgusted with people who think wearing masks is a hardship. The next communication is from Emma Stern, Megan Stern, who lives in Ballwin. I urge you to reject bills two-twenty, two-twenty-two and two-twenty-three, which are designed to thwart the county executive's authority. It's only because of Dr. Page's executive orders based on the current knowledge of COVID that we've been able to reduce our infection rates and get our economy going again. The orders for masks, groups, youth sports and the like are clearly based on the evolving facts and made in the best interest of the entire county. This is the appropriate time for the county executive and Health Department. Undermining them will increase deaths and long lingering illness and shut down the county again. I respectfully ask that you reject two-twenty-nine, two-twenty-two and two-twenty-three. Following is from Wayne and Becky Kessel. I am a Rockwood School District parent and I wear a mask. We're not anti-maskers. Completely untrue. The only reason a board member would be opposed to checks and balances would be if that member is involved in kickbacks or some other illegal activity. Please pass bills two-twenty, two-twenty-two and two-twenty-three and save your individual political reputations. In no way should one person be in charge of a dollar of taxpayer money, let alone two-hundred-and-seventy million dollars. We do not want Zuckerberg's grant for ballot distribution. That is a conflict of interest. Citizens should not have to play games, including sending their email at midnight in order to have a chance that their voice will be heard. Childish games caused by childish so-called leaders. Following is from Greg Divas. There's been a lack of oversight in the county executive position that goes back years and was never fixed. Temporary powers granted by the county council with no expiration date pays the way for abusive power and eliminates checks and balances. One million people in our county deserve check balances of the county exec regardless of political party. Because of the lack of oversight, there has been an ongoing abuse of power such as the following. One, acceptance of election grants from outside sources with known political agendas. This includes an attempt to rush the passage of the grant acceptance without detailing how that money would be utilized. There is no such thing as free money. What are the stipulations of acceptance? Uneven application of sports mandates. Cheer cannot stunt. Tournaments cannot play. High school players lost half their season for no valid reason while the entire state got to play football. No clear measurable goals and objectives for St. Louis County COVID metrics. No end of restrictions in sight. When do things reopen and how? When I say so. Is not acceptable. One person or office cannot have this kind of power. Unilateral mandates have destroyed our local economy and the education of our youth, especially small businesses and those who are most needy. The WHO has come out and recommended against lockdown as a primary tool to fight COVID because of the destruction it causes. County metrics follow irrelevant age groups. It's October of the year, of the school year. Only twenty-five percent of high school seniors will be eighteen. Yet we're still including nineteen in this group. County Council, we need your support. If you defeat these bills without any compromise, what are you hiding? Are you trying to hold on to the power to control instead of lead the people of St. Louis County? The people of St. Louis County deserve better. We live in a democracy and our government has been guided by a system of checks and balances. We need you to pass bills two-twenty, two-twenty-two, two-twenty-three so that Sam Page and any future county executive is accountable and has limits on power. Thank you. This is from Barbara Pfeifer. I am opposed to bills two-twenty, two-twenty-two and two-twenty-three. It's a terrible idea to require a vote every fifteen days in order to keep in place orders for the protection of the residents of the county. We are in the middle of a pandemic. This is not the time to play with our health. Following is from Laura Strasser. I'm writing today in support of oversight bills two-twenty, two-twenty-two and two-twenty-three. This is critical to our governing system currently in place. I am also asking you today to remove mask mandates. We, the people of Missouri, were promised by the governor that once the spread was slowed, they would lift the restrictions. We've not done this. We are seeing bacteria on our children's faces. We're seeing children suffer depression and their anxiety grow. I know this firsthand as my son, who is in sixth grade, suffers from anxiety. Enough is enough. If people need to wear a mask or are more comfortable, they certainly can, but we can't be forced to wear one. Businesses are suffering. As a small business owner who works on the building, works on building up and supporting other local businesses in our area, too many doors have closed. They will not be able to come back from the detriment that has been done. The mental well-being as well as the financial stability of too many families are at risk. Following is from Laura Mueller. Mask mandates are crucial. After Arizona mandated masks, new cases of COVID plummeted by seventy-five percent. Masks work and are simple. Protect our St. Louisans, please. Rely on science. Following is from Don Herbeck. Please vote in favors of bills two-twenty-two and two-twenty-three. Are you listening to your constituents? You ran for office because you wanted to serve and make a difference in St. Louis County, correct? We're ready to turn the page and elect someone to the position of county executive, Paul Berry III. Please refrain from lecturing us and trying to put us down. I'm sorry that you, Lisa Clancy, see our concerns as, quote, "partisanship, privilege and racism," unquote. I see this movement as St. Louis County coming together to fight for what we believe in. Northwest, south and the central corridor are united. Please also decline the quote-unquote "grant" from C T C L. This sounds too good to be true. That means it is. No thank you to harvesting ballots. This next one is from Christine Keller. My family has taken all precautions during this global pandemic. Yet I'm worried about my father-in-law, who is currently in a hospital after having tested positive for COVID-19 a week ago. I'm sure you join me in wishing him a healthy recovery. I serve my community as a school board director in St. Louis County. When making important decisions that impact our students, teachers and staff, I need to trust that the county executive's COVID-19 mandates expire due to data-driven methods and public health knowledge, not political games or failings. Please do not pass bills two-twenty, two-twenty-two and two-twenty-three. Thank you for your service. Following is from Fay Marit. I'm writing to you to request that you do not end public health and safety orders, bill numbers two-twenty, two-twenty-two and two-twenty-three related to the COVID-19 pandemic. It is very important that the county mask mandate continue. Scientific evidence has proven over and over that the most effective way to prevent getting infected with COVID-19 is by wearing a mask and social distancing. This was discussed in detail by Dr. Ed Field of the CDC. I will not be going to any stores unless the mask mandates continue and I can be assured that everyone in the store, restaurant, post office, et cetera, is wearing a mask. I cannot chance that I may contract COVID from some irresponsible and selfish person that doesn't want to wear a mask and protect themselves and protect me. Dr. Page was proactive and absolutely did the correct thing by instituting the mask mandate to help protect his constituents. I feel safe grocery shopping, going to Walgreens, Kohl's, Dollar Tree, et cetera, knowing that I feel protected by the staff and patrons of the stores, all wearing their masks. If this order is removed, I will stay home and I won't return to these establishments. Unfortunately, I have to have food delivered to my home and my other purchases, excuse me, shipped to me by Amazon. Do the right thing and leave the, and leave intact the mask mandate and all the other public health safety orders currently enforced. Our lives depend on it. Thank you for your consideration in this matter.
From Kelly Loretta. Dear St. Louis County Council members, I strongly urge the council to reject bills two-twenty, two-twenty-two and two-twenty-three as they are a terrible politicization of public health. Instead, I urge the council to continue with measures to protect the health of St. Louis County residents. Medical and public health experts agree on the importance of public masking. Masking is effective at curbing the spread of COVID-19. States with mask mandates have exhibited slower growth rates compared to those that did not. Universal masking policies have prevented thousands of COVID-19 cases. My mother-in-law, who is also a St. Louis County resident, is in her seventies and has only sixty percent kidney function and COVID-19 could literally kill her. Please protect her and all of our at-risk loved ones. From Dr. Lisa Oliverio. Members of the county council, I am writing in opposition to bills two-twenty, two-twenty-two and two-twenty-three. Public health should not be treated as a political football. Public health decisions should be made by experts with backgrounds in public health, epidemiology and virology. Politicians are not experts in these fields, nor are constituents. As a teacher of students from all over the St. Louis region, I have seen the harm, which is no doubt long-term, of COVID. I have a trove of sympathy cards now to send to my college-age students and alums when their family members die. We need to act in the interest of public health, not popular will. If we had, if we had down, probably done that from the outset, we would not be where we are today. We cannot wish away the virus. We must listen to experts. If we do not, the deaths of thousands more will be on our hands. Thank you. From Kate Stratton. To Sam Page and Council, County Council. Vote yes on bills two-twenty, two-twenty-two, two-twenty-three, which would limit the county executive's emergency powers to two weeks. Vote no again on bill two-thirty-one, which would allow the county executive to receive a grant of up to two million forty-eight thousand four hundred seventy-four from the Center for Tech and Civic Life. The Center for Tech and Civic Life is a far-left, insanely well-funded organization that specializes in ballot harvesting. Sam Page has taken grants from the firm to ensure the November third election goes the way he wants. Read more here. There's a link. Danger: St. Louis County Executive Sam Page Connected to Ballot Harvesting Specialists. Last week during Page's report, he touched on the 2021 budget shortfall due to declining tax revenue because the county is still not open one hundred percent. In the face of a budget shortfall and numerous businesses going under, Page proposes to keep the four-point-three-million-dollar-line item for merit pay, raise the minimum wage for government employees to fifteen dollars, allocate one hundred million for road and facilities repair. Additionally, the county council is having a meeting of the whole to discuss placing bicycle lanes on unincorporated roads. Do not support this. Substitute bill number two for bill three-eighty-five, twenty-nineteen regulations for bicyclists is a concern for the safety of bicyclists as well as drivers of automobiles. We don't need any more congestion with added bicycle lanes everywhere. The county has many bike trails for our citizens to enjoy. What a waste of our time and taxpayer dollars. And here we go again. Vote no on bill three-twenty. Do not repeal our vagrancy laws. Finally, Lisa Clancy, because of your employment at Gladiator Consulting, you need to resign as county chair. Gladiator's website describes your company's mission is to disrupt. Your company also calls for radical redistribution, I'm sorry, retribution of wealth and work with the community to procreate the conditions needed to self-organize, directly control the power and money. Lisa Clancy's work is antithetical to the aims of the St. Louis County Council. Her company aims to create an environment that is bad for county residents. We need a chair that understands the role of chairperson, of the chairperson and is willing to work for St. Louis County residents. From Erica Butch-Lauder, excuse me if I mispronounced that, M.D. Dear councilmen and women, I am opposed to lifting masking requirements and occupancy limits in St. Louis County. The importance of these measures to limit the spread of and longer-term health consequence and death from COVID-19 should be determined by public health experts. As a psychiatrist, my colleagues and I are seeing an increase in the liberating depression, anxiety and even psychosis in previously healthy people after infection with COVID. It is each of our responsibilities to protect ourselves and others which can be done through masking while engaging in daily life. From Olivia Gerjio. Dear St. Louis County Council members, I urge the council to reject bills two-twenty, two-twenty-two and two-twenty-three as they are an awful politicization of public health and human safety. Instead, I urge the council to continue with measures to protect the health of St. Louis County residents, especially with the flu season upon us, which is a critical time. Lifting public safety measures will not help and will in fact hurt our local economy. By lifting the mandate, the county is placing businesses in a very uncomfortable position and I fear that without the government requiring safety precautions, businesses will not be able to enforce masking and other safety measures of their patrons. If lifted, I will not allow myself or my family to continue to visit local businesses and I suspect others will do the same. Without the safety measures, we are greatly endangering the lives of our most vulnerable population and our essential workers by unnecessarily exposing them to the virus. Medical and public health experts agree on the importance of public masking. Universal masking is effective at curbing the spread of COVID-19. States with masking mandates have exhibited slower growth rates compared to those that did not. Universal masking policies have prevented hundreds, if not thousands, of COVID-19 cases. Masking is undeniably simple, easy and effective at containing the spread of COVID-19. at containing the spread of COVID-19, and I strongly urge you all to vote no on bills 220, 222, and 223. From Allison Ramirez, Hello, I am very concerned about county councilmember's desire to override the Health Department's decisions. The mask mandates are for the public's protection. Why, I realize there is a group of parents from the Rockwood School District who is opposed to wearing them, and I have become very vocal about it to this board. Please understand that they do not represent everyone who lives in St. Louis County. I absolutely believe Councilman Tim Fitch's desire is an example of overreach. For what it's worth, I have asthma and I am fully capable of wearing masks. I also understand there is no medical reason that prevents wearing them, according to the medical community. I wear them to protect people around me and hope others care enough to do the same for me. From Robert Newport, To whom it may concern, As I, as I understand it, the council is considering three bills require a supermajority to place public health and emergency orders. Leave it to politicians to politicize the health and safety of the citizens. It has, it has been the word of public health officials, doctors, and scientists that has informed us of the safety of masks while politicians contradict them in order to appease a few vocal voters who are only concerned about their quote-unquote "personal liberties." Mask mandates have kept the county from having the frightening numbers that the rest of our state has now. But because a few of you on the council fear for your reelection more than the health of the constituents, you'll do whatever you can to undermine those doctors, public health officials, and scientists, as well as the county executive, just to keep yourselves in a power position. The people of this country used to show care and concern for each other, but politicians like yourselves have turned them against each other to benefit only yourselves. Any one of you who votes to put these measures in place has no concern for the public. The health and safety of your constituents should be your first concern, especially during a pandemic. Voting for a supermajority only shows concern for yourselves. From Jim Rusing, Thank you for taking my comment. I have lived in the county for the majority of my life, so it is very sad to see what this council is doing to it. I would like to ask Lisa Clancy how speaking up for our rights and our children's rights to play sports is racist. How is that privilege? I think privilege is tweeting out COVID numbers and then not apologizing when it turns out to be completely false. I think privilege is having your brother manage Sam Page's reelection campaign. Surely, there is no conflict of interest there. For someone who throws their quote-unquote "privilege" around a lot, you really should not lecture us for wanting our kids to play sports. Thanks, Tim, Mark, and Rita, for standing up for the people who you represent. Thank you. From Nacy K. Green, Dear St. Louis Council members, I urge the council to protect the lives of county residents by continuing to require us to wear masks. Clearly, there is overwhelming documentation. It shows that wearing a mask protects us from COVID-19. Universal masking policies have successfully prevented endless cases of the spread of the virus. I, along with my husband and adult daughter, have been diligent throughout the past seven months. We have done our part as responsible county citizens and followed every order by staying home and never shopping, I'm sorry, never stepping out without a mask. Our vigilance keeps all who are around us safe as well. If you lift the mask mandate, I assure you that none of us will be comfortable leaving our house, and local, and local businesses will suffer as we will not put ourselves around people without masks. You do not ask too much of us by mandating masks. Lifting such a simple requirement will set us back economically and endanger all of us. Your job is to keep us safe and guide us through this difficult time. Please do your job and vote no on bills 220, 222, and 223. From Sarah Klenofsky, To the members of the St. Louis County Council, My name is Sarah Klenofsky. My family and I reside in Chesterfield. As an educator, parent, and member of the community, I am deeply concerned with the current bills, 220, 222, and 223, being proposed to override public health measures recommended by the county Health Department. I am deeply disappointed in my councilman, Mark Harder, for indulging in anti, in anti-science rants on Facebook and urging members of our community to push against our county Health Department recommendations that have been put in place to keep our community's spread of COVID-19 down. It is widely known, that's, is widely known science of our public health professionals, scientists, and the medical community that wearing a mask is the most beneficial tool we have at the moment to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. Please reject these dangerous bills that will cause St. Louis County to become a hot zone of COVID spread and end up closing businesses once again. Thank you. From Kimberly Hannan West, In order to fight this airborne virus, one must understand that masks might be inconvenient, but they are not symbols of oppression. As a teacher, I implore you to watch the county data since August. The mandate is helping. If you want children in schools, continue the mask mandate. Be responsible for others. Do not mistake inconvenience for oppression. From Dawn Friedman, I have lived in St. Louis my entire life, and I am completely disgusted with the way our county executive and a free, few of the representatives have been behaving. The latest is the meeting thrown in regarding the grant money for ballot harvesting. This is something we are not interested in, and the money should not be accepted. Private businesses should not be influencing our elections. I also believe the best interests of the county are served by passing bills 220, 222, and 223. One person should never have this much power. There is a committee of seven for a reason. It's called checks and balances. The county is not in a state of emergency. These issues have brought St. Louis together and crossed political boundaries. The WHO does not even recommend the lockdowns anymore. Open the county back up and let us all go about living again. From Barry Breimer, Quality leadership is paramount during any crisis. There is no scale to measure enough how important this is during the biggest public health crisis in our lifetime. Leadership needs to make decisions that are comprehensive, consider the big picture, and make decisions to ensure the long-term success and viability of those which they have been tasked to lead. To do this properly requires gathering the advice of subject matter experts that have devoted their careers to and are actively working on the front lines in relevant fields. It is critical to seek out trends and intuition of those experts who can give you an inside, up-to-the-minute view of the events that are occurring right now before their eyes, I'm sorry, occurring right before their eyes, complete with their analysis, which may or may not agree with published data. This is especially important right now as our data regarding virus transmission is widely debated, measured on a variety of scales, and rapidly changing. With all due respect, if my house is on fire, I'm not calling a politician. I'm calling the fire department. If the physical well-being of my family is in danger, I'm not calling a politician. I'm calling the police. And if my health is in danger, simply put, I'm calling a doctor. I know that you're receiving countless messages from well-organized vocal individuals encouraging you to relax mask restrictions to allow the economy and schools to open and to get things back to normal. We all want normal, but until there is definitive proven COVID-19 vaccine widely available and the number of infections goes down and stays down, there won't be a return to what was normal. We need leaders to make decisions that are comprehensive, consider the big picture, and benefit the long-term viability of our community. That is done through mask mandates and enforceable restrictions with consequences. I urge you to vote no on bills 220, 222, and 223 to give our community best chance at success and the most expedient return to normal.
Madam Chair.
I was asking.
That's a woman gray.
In any case, I have to leave the meeting at this point to attend a Port Authority Board meeting. So I will not be able to continue. I'll come back if that meeting ends, but typically they go till at least 7 o'clock. So I have to sign off now. I apologize for having to leave, but that's an obligation. That's a regular monthly commitment. So thank you all, and I will see you soon.
Thank you, Councilman. It's been noted.
From Sylvia Martinez, My name is Sylvia Martinez, and I am in favor of the mask mandate in St. Louis County. COVID-19 is still a threat to our community, and wearing a mask allows us to go out in public and feel safer than we would without mask-wearing. Please keep the mandate in place. Thank you.
My name is Anola Proctor, resident of Olivette in St. Louis County. I strongly oppose bills 220, 222, and 223. Those bills are a shameful attempt to politicize our county's public health. Universal masking is an evidence-based approach to COVID-19 transmission. Masking is our best protection against the disease and the best protection for our county's health, safety, and economic gain. I contracted COVID-19 in May 2020 and struggled to function for two months. I still suffer from lingering effects. I know many people who have contracted COVID. I refuse to step inside any business where staff and customers aren't masked. Your job as a county council is to keep us safe. Please don't endanger our health and economy by passing these dangerous bills. Vote them down. Thank you for the opportunity for input. The following is from Lauren Sullivan. I am writing to implore you to reject bills 220, 222, and 223 as they aim to politicize regulations meant to protect public health. I urge the council to continue on with any and all measures that protect the health of the citizens of St. Louis County by following the recommendations of medical and public health experts. It's been shown that universal masking is extremely effective at curbing the spread of COVID-19. In fact, states that have implemented mask mandates have been slow, have seen slower growth rates of the virus compared to those that did not. As a working parent, I was faced with a tough decision of how to approach childcare for my infant and preschooler. I knew my three-year-old craves social engagement, and I wanted him to have access to a quality education. Fortunately for us, our school district preschool opted to open with reduced class sizes and a requirement for all students to wear masks. My son has never been happier. He's loved making new friends, is learning to write his name, and with excitement picks out his morning mask every day. It's always a tough call between Dino's Monster Trucks and Frozen. The school has been open for almost two months, and there have been no outbreaks, and the school has not had time or has not had to close down at any time. While my children are at school, I work as the only area pediatric hospice and palliative care social worker. I go into the homes of families with severely medically complex children. These parents are under constant stress of what would happen if their child were to contract this virus. Having our country rescind, having our county rescind any guidelines that have been recommended by public health experts would not only add undue stress onto these families but would place these medically fragile children at risk as many of their parents have to be out in the community working. I understand the political pressure the county council is under during these trying times, but I implore you to look past this and to continue to do what is best for our area and the health of its citizens. Vote no on bills 220, 222, and 223. Okay, alrighty. The following is from Allison Isaac. St. Louis County needs to maintain authority to mandate masks in public spaces for the health and safety of all citizens. If masks are not required, those of us with concerns about our health and our family's health won't visit businesses who don't mandate masks. We know masks will help prevent spread and save lives.
Pardon me, Madam Chair. Well, I don't know, is she still here? Who's, who's, who's running the meeting right now?
I am.
Okay. So I'm trying to understand what's going on here. Looks like, right, looks like right now there's only three of us on the call. On the meeting. I'm sorry?
No. Mark Carter's here. Mark, you, Colleen, and Rochelle. I don't see his picture, but...
Been in and out the entire meeting.
So I, a question for the county counselor is, what, oh, he's back.
Yeah.
He was there, he's been...
If we lose Councilman Harder, what is the status of the meeting? Does it continue, or what happens?
You need to maintain quorum to continue the meeting, and quorum is for councilmembers.
So what does that mean that every time Councilman Harder goes in and out of service? Because he's getting obviously spotty service. Does the meeting end, and do we wait for him to rejoin?
I don't think he's going in and out. He's, he's still there, even if he's got his, his camera off. At certain times, he's still...
Right.
He's still attending the meeting.
I think that's...
So if you would answer my question, I, what I said was if he can't participate, does the meeting end, and do we wait for him to rejoin, or how does this work?
I think if he would get disconnected, you, it, you know, I would assume, and that's really a question for the chair, if she would give him some time to reconnect. But yes, if you, if you lose quorum, then, then, then you would no longer be in a meeting. But I wouldn't say that because someone, for a moment or a minute, disconnects and tries to reconnect, that that means that you, you've lost quorum and have to immediately end the meeting. They can have the opportunity to reconnect, just as, as you usually do in any meeting.
Okay, so...
I, Rita had that problem. I've had the problem where I had to get off my screen, froze. I had to leave the meeting and come back. So generally, we text someone when it happens, or call them and, or chair, and let them know if that's the case. We don't just disconnect, to my knowledge, and not inform someone. So I, I would, we will give him a call if that happens.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Penny.
Good, now that I have your attention, let me just ask you a question. Are you gonna be available tomorrow at 1:00 p.m. or not until 2:00?
I'm sorry, you talking to me?
Yes.
1:00, is that what you said?
Tomorrow, yes. And you can let me know later.
Okay, I'll let you know. Right now I have a different constituent meeting planned at 1:00. But I could see if I could rearrange it.
Okay, then I'll get the information from you, Councilman Harder, later. It's, I don't need to know right now, unless you want to discuss it.
Looks like he's trying to talk, but he froze again.
Madam Chair, should we move on with public comments?
Yes, continue.
Okay.
Okay, this is from Kirsten Rayburn.
Perfect, good.
To the members of the St. Louis County Council, My name is Kirsten Rayburn, and my family and I reside in Kirkwood. As a healthcare professional, parent, and member of the community, I am deeply concerned with the current bills, 220, 222, and 223, being proposed to override public health measures recommended by the county Health Department. I am deeply disappointed in the council for indulging anti-science constituents in the creation of these bills. My seventy-three-year-old mother and father-in-law, who also live in Kirkwood, are very independent and have benefited greatly from the mask mandate put in place by the county. After months hunkered down at home with limited public engagement, they now feel safe enough to leave their home to do grocery shopping and run errands. I know many people have argued about personal responsibility and suggested that the vulnerable population should just stay home so they don't have to wear a mask in public spaces. Yet we are now asking our children to return to school and wear masks all day and sit behind Plexiglas dividers while we, as adults, feel masks are not needed. It does not make sense that return to school has been encouraged, yet the council is considered, considering relaxing or doing away with all mandates. If it is important to get kids back to school and keep them there, we need to keep our parents and teachers that shop and our kids that play in the community in a safe environment as well, so we can keep case numbers down and the kids in school. It saddens me that people are so focused on losing their specific rights by having to wear a mask and not gather in large groups that they can't see past it to do what is best for our community, state, and country. Public health professionals, scientists, and the medical community all agree. Mask-wearing is the most beneficial tool we have at the moment to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. Please reject these dangerous bills that could take away a safety net for the most vulnerable among us. Thank you sincerely, Kirsten Rayber. The next one is from Tom Polly. Dear Sam Page and St. Louis County Council members, I am writing this week to ask you to please pass bills two twenty-two and two twenty-three to provide oversight of the St. Louis County Executive. Sam Page informed us that all but ten million dollars of the CARES Act money has been allocated. So where is the transparent list of who all got the money? Where is the transparent promised in your transparency promised in your campaign? Should we ask Lisa Clancy's brother? I could not believe the accusation made at last week's council meeting that everyone who has sent in comments to the council meetings wants to kill grandparents and grocery store workers by not wearing masks, by asking for bill approval, uh, for bills two twenty-two and two twenty-three. Should a single individual have the power to make that decision on his own? Or should that person be held accountable by the county council with appropriate checks and balances in place? How does the oversight, uh-oh, equate to wanting to kill grandparents and grocery store workers? Shame on anyone on the council who uses scare tactics to imply that. Whether the county executive is a Democrat or a Republican, they should have those checks and balances in place. The St. Louis County residents deserve that, so please in favor of bill two twenty-two and two twenty-three. Thank you, Tom Polly. This is from, the next one's from Dolores Gozer. Masks need to remain mandatory until legitimate health authorities deem them unnecessary. Masks are a health issue, not a political one. All citizens should be required to wear masks until the virus is under control. The next one is from Cynthia Early. St. Louis County Council members, I am urging you to pass bills two twenty-two and two twenty-three. This issue is not about masks. It is about transparency in government and not suppressing the views of the constituents you have been elected to represent. I'm deeply troubled that this county executive and council members are seemingly unwilling to have proper checks and balances. Cynthia Early. The next one is from Rabbi Carney Rose. Dear St. Louis County Council members, I am writing to strongly urge the council to reject bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. Sadly, they represent a politicization of public health. Instead, I urge the council to continue with measures to protect the health and well-being of all St. Louis County residents. Medical and public health experts agree on the importance of public masking, as universal masking is effective at curbing the spread of COVID-19. States with mask mandates have exhibited slower growth rates compared to those that did not. Clearly, universal masking policies have prevented thousands of additional COVID-19 cases. Lifting public safety measures will also hurt our local economy. By lifting the mandate, the county is placing businesses in an uncomfortable position, and I fear that without the government requiring safety precautions, businesses will not be able to enforce masking and other safety measures of their patrons. If lifted, I will have to severely limit my patronizing local businesses, and I suspect others will do the same. Without the safety measures, we are endangering the lives of our most vulnerable populations and our essential workers by unnecessarily exposing them to the virus. Masking is undeniably simple, easy, effective at containing the spread of COVID-19, and thus I strongly urge you all to vote no on bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. Thank you, Carney Rose. The next one is from Ann Marshall. I strongly urge the council to reject bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three as they are a terrible politicization of public health. Instead, I urge the council to continue with measures to protect the health of St. Louis County residents. Medical and public health experts agree on the importance of public masking. Universal masking is effective at curbing the spread of COVID-19. Masks with mask mandates have exhibited slower growth rates compared to those that did not. Universal masking policies have prevented thousands of COVID-19 cases. I work in a retail environment, and clients without masks present a real and present danger to all of us that work in that environment. I have worn a mask in public since March to avoid contracting this bizarre virus that attacks people in an unknown multitude of ways. My parents are over eighty, two are in fragile health, and I am a helper to both of them and cannot help them if I am exposed to anyone that has COVID, a carrier of COVID, and asymptomatic carriers. If we all wear masks, we stay healthy. Missouri cases are spiking, and until there is a vaccine, masks need to be worn in public, period. Less masking equals more illness equals less economic recovery. Thank you. Thank you for thinking for, of all of us, Ann Marshall. Next one is from Andrew Zuckerman. Dear St. Louis County Council members, as a community pediatrician in St. Louis for the past twenty-three years, I strongly urge the council to reject bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three as they are a terrible politicization of public health. Instead, I urge the council to continue with measures to protect the health of the St. Louis County residents. I moved here in nineteen ninety-three from medical school at SLU, and I chose to remain here to marry, raise children, buy a house, pay taxes, and support local institutions. Practice pediatric medicine for all children in the area, regardless of race, religion, sexual orientation, and socioeconomic status. Medical and public health experts agree on the importance of public masking, and universal masking is effective at curbing the spread of COVID-19. States with mask mandates have exhibited slower growth rates of COVID-19 cases, fewer hospitalizations, and better outcomes. We cannot expect a return to normal anytime soon without following this most simple of guidelines. Lifting public safety measures will hurt our local economy. Without these safety measures, we are endangering the lives of our most vulnerable population and our essential workers by unnecessarily exposing them to the virus. I strongly urge you all to vote no on bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. Thank you, Andrew Zuckerman, M.D. All right, the next one is from Kathleen Gianano. Dear Dr. Page, County Chair Clancy, and St. Louis County Council, I am asking all council members to vote in support of bills two twenty-two and two twenty-three that will limit the power of the county executive. No one person, regardless of political party, should have the right to dictate how almost one million people live their day-to-day lives without the support of a governing body. These bills are asking for decisions that affect the county population to be considered and voted on by their elected representatives. The bills are implementing a checks and balances procedure that should be in place in a democracy. At this point, one person has held an entire county hostage. People are losing their livelihoods. The mental health of kids and adults alike are deteriorating, and there's no way to stop this. One person should not have unilateral control. These bills are not about wearing masks, social distancing, et cetera. They are about giving a vote to the entire council. I believe in our elected officials, and they will act in the best interest of our county and vote accordingly. Kathleen Gianano. This next one is from Dickla Ruffa. Dear St. Louis County Council members, I urge the council to continue with measures to protect the health of St. Louis County residents. Please reject bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three as they are a terrible politicization of public health. States with mask mandates have exhibited slower growth rates compared to those that did not. Universal masking policies have prevented thousands of COVID-19 cases. Without the safety measures, we are endangering the lives of our most vulnerable population and our essential workers by unnecessarily exposing them to the virus. Masking is easy and effective in containing, at containing the spread of COVID-19, and I strongly urge you all to vote no on bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. This is from Mary Ann Power. Dear council members, absolute power corrupts absolutely. This is why it is imperative that the council pass bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. Contrary to current propaganda, passage of these bills, this does not mean we are asking for an overturn of the mask mandate. This does not mean that we will not have protection during a pandemic. We are just asking for more oversight in a county that has previously experienced corruption at the executive level. It means there will be a team of people that will review the recommendations of scientists and professionals together, rather than one person making, person making a unilateral decision for all. These decisions are too important to be made by one person alone, even if that one person does contain the letters M.D. behind his name. Remember that this will not always have a, we will not always have a physician in the seat of county executive, executive, and these bills are not only for the present, but the future. Additionally, Lisa Clancy, shame on you for referring to your constituents as troublemakers and racists. Let me remind you that your job is as a servant leader, not queen. All voices deserve to be heard without contempt, even when they differ from your own agenda. Sincerely, Mary Ann Power. The next one's from Sandy Brooks. Dear St. Louis County Council members, I strongly urge the council to reject bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three as they are a terrible politicization of public health. I urge you to continue with measures to protect the health of St. Louis County residents. As a member of the medical community, I know the importance and agree with the experts on universal public masking as an effective way of curbing the spread of COVID-19. Lifting public safety measures will hurt our local economy, and by lifting the mandate of masking, many people will not allow their families to patronize local businesses. We will also be exposing our essential workers to the virus. I strongly urge you to vote no on bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two, two twenty-three. Thank you, Sandra Brooks, R.N. This next one is from Janet Barron. Dear St. Louis County Council members, I strongly urge the council to reject bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three as they are a terrible politicization of public health. Instead, I urge the council to continue with measures to protect the health of St. Louis County residents. Medical and public health experts agree on the importance of public masking. Universal masking is effective at curbing the spread of COVID-19. States with mask mandates have exhibited slower growth rates compared to those that did not. Universal masking policies have prevented thousands of COVID-19 cases. Lifting public safety measures will, in fact, hurt our local economy. By lifting the mandate, the county is placing businesses in an uncomfortable position, and I fear that without the government requiring safety precautions, businesses will not be able to enforce masking and other safety measures of their patrons. If lifted, I will not allow my family to continue to visit local businesses, and I suspect others will do the same. Without the safety measures, we are endangering the lives of our most vulnerable population and our essential workers by unnecessarily exposing them to the virus. Masking is undeniably simple, easy, and effective at containing the spread of COVID-19, and I strongly urge you all to vote no on bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. Thank you, Janet Barron. The next one is from Shay Halpert. Dear St. Louis County Council members, I strongly urge the council to reject bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three as they are a terrible politicization of public health. Instead, I urge the council to continue with measures to protect the health of St. Louis County residents. Medical and public health experts agree on the importance of public masking. Universal masking is effective at curbing the spread of COVID-19. States with mask mandates have exhibited slower growth rates compared to those that had, that did not. Universal masking policies have prevented thousands of COVID-19 cases. Lifting public safety measures will, in fact, hurt our local economy. By lifting the mandate, the county is placing businesses in an uncomfortable position, and I fear that without the government requiring safety precautions, businesses will not be able to enforce masking and other safety measures of their patrons. If lifted, I will not allow my family, will not allow my family to continue to visit local businesses, and I suspect others will do the same. Without the safety measures, we are endangering the lives of our most vulnerable, vulnerable population and our essential workers. By, it's really the same letter, but just a different name, by unnecessarily exposing them to the virus. If my young child can do with that, with that, do it without complaint, so can we as adults. Thank you, Shay Halpert.
Madam Chair. It does look like Councilman Harder has left the meeting.
Yes, um, I got your text. I'm texting, um, Lisa now to find out where, what time to reconvene.
Okay, would you like, would you like for, uh, Penny to continue?
Yes, please, and then I'll interrupt her in a few minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
This, this next one's from Laura Silver. I urge you to vote no on any bill that would restrict the authority of the county executive or the health department to issue emergency orders for extended durations during this pandemic. Our economy is moving towards recovery due to this mask mandate. Those who would otherwise stay home are able to go into retail stores, medical offices, restaurants, groceries, and other public establishments because they know others will be wearing the required masks. Please keep in mind that masks protect others because aerosols travel through the air and enter through the eyes. Even if you are wearing a mask, you can contract it through your eyes if others are not. Unless everyone is wearing a mask, we are all at risk of contracting COVID. To allow the council to undermine this effort with a supermajority vote would be dangerous to our economy and our well-being. The health department is trained, are trained professionals who are in the best position to know what it will take to keep our community safe. Thank you, Laura Silver. This next one is for, from Keith and Becky Carey. It has been brought to our attention that there is discussion on.
We can, he's trying to get back into my knowledge. Um, so I'll let, um, Ms. Penny finish, and then we'll, unless I hear from him.
I would recommend that you, Councilwoman, I would recommend that you pause and, and allow Councilman, uh, Harder, Harder the opportunity to try to reconnect.
The other option is we can recess and reconvene at five PM. Are you okay with that, Councilman Fitch?
I have a hard stop at five.
Okay. So if you leave, I'm trying to count, do the numbers, because Lisa's come, we'll become, the chair will be able to, to, like, um, one, two. Okay, okay, well, we'll, we'll pause. Um.
Pass to Councilman Harder to try to reconnect.
Yes, or we may, we, we may recess. I'll wait a few minutes. About five minutes.
Okay.
I think that most likely we're going to recess until five, but she's gonna call me right back. She's communicating with, uh, Ann. Okay. I guess, I guess we can proceed.
You can proceed. You can proceed.
Okay. Oh, is he, is he waving or trying to tell me something? Okay, let's proceed, Miss, oh, no. I guess he's saying that he's not, he's not really, we can see him, but he's not there. I mean, he doesn't have, um, he's not connected, I guess is the only way to put it. So what does that mean, Jean?
It appears that he's gone again. I would say that if you, if you don't have quorum, you can't take the action to recess to, to a time certain.
Oh, so we can't even recess to another time?
No, because you don't have a quorum of members to take that action.
Oh, so Lisa would have had to do that before she left.
Looks like Councilman Harder maybe is popping back up again.
Well, I think we better do, we better set the time before we lose him. Um. So I know tomorrow we would like to reconvene at either 1:00 P.M. or 2:00 P.M. And I just need to know from Councilman Fitch and Councilman Harder, what time is good for them? One or two?
Madam Vice Chair, I could make, I should be able to make 2:00 o'clock work.
I can make 2:00 work as well.
Okay, so if we cannot reconvene this evening, we will reconvene on tomorrow at 2:00 for sure, or definitely, for a better word. Uh, we will attempt to reconvene today.
But, Madam Chair, you would have to, you would have to reconvene, you would have to recess until a time certain.
I know. I'm saying, I know that. Right now, trying to get Mr. Harder or Councilman Harder's time for today, if he can answer the question.
Okay, can I, may I?
Yes.
Just a clarifying question with Jen. Um, I think I heard you say that we actually have to have a quorum on to make a motion and then pass the motion to reconvene at 2:00 P.M. tomorrow.
Correct.
That's why I wanted to, um, try to figure Mr. Harder, if he can come back today, or do we need to reconvene tomorrow at 2:00?
Well, I think I hear, I think I hear you saying that, uh, Jen, I think I hear you saying we have to have a quorum to make the decision, is that right?
Correct.
What if we don't have a quorum, then what do we do about today?
And I would say that, um, you would have to adjourn for lack of a quorum.
Okay, but can we take the action to adjourn if we don't have a quorum?
Well, I mean.
Or does it happen automatically?
You would, you would, you would be adjourned for lack of a quorum.
Okay, so that exists right now as we're speaking?
Right. Well, right now, you, I think Councilman Harder is, um, is, uh, in the meeting, he's just having some connectivity problems.
So Kelly, you think we should, um, because Councilman Fitch cannot come back this evening. Do you want to reconvene tomorrow, recess until tomorrow, or recess tonight?
I don't think we can. Like, it feels like we're just stuck here. I mean, if Chairwoman Clancy can get back on, when Chairwoman Clancy can get back on and we can make the motion to reconvene tomorrow at 2:00, well, we lost Councilman Harder again.
Right, and we'll lose Fitch at 5:00, so that's why I wanted to do it now while Harder.
Well, now you, now you don't have a quorum to, to take any action, Madam Vice Chair.
I know now we don't. That's why I was trying to hurry up and do it while Harder was still on. But I was trying to, now do you want to come back today or tomorrow? But now we can't because he's gone again.
Right. Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I ask a question of the counselor?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Um, Jen, if we have to adjourn for lack of a quorum, does that mean we can't continue this particular meeting?
I would prefer to advise on that later.
Okay, okay.
Let me call Lisa real quick.
Okay, just mute, mute, yeah, sweet.
Diane, is it possible that Councilman Harder could call into the meeting as a panelist, since he's having, uh, uh, video problems?
But I thought we couldn't vote unless we were on.
Video.
On a roll call vote.
Oh, okay.
Chris, can you answer that for us? Can, uh, Councilman Harder call in?
Uh, if he logs in when he calls in, then I can move him from an attendee up to a panelist. So I can do that as a matter of technicality. Um, but I don't know that that answers the legal question of the vote. That's beyond my scope of understanding.
Well, we're not taking a roll call vote, so he doesn't have to be, he doesn't have to be, uh, visual. We don't have to see him.
Yes, this is just a voice vote.
Yeah.
But yes, if he, if he comes in and he doesn't phone in and doesn't come in as a panelist, but he's in it as an attendee, I can move him up. That's not a problem.
Okay, is someone going to reach out to him? Do you want me to reach out to? Chris, do you have the, um, call-in information handy?
Uh, I can get it up here. Give you just a second. I'll, I'll take a picture of my screen. I'll just send it to Councilman Harder.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hello, Councilwoman.
Hello, I am sorry about that. I've got, I'm here now.
Okay, we just need to, um, have a motion to reconvene on tomorrow?
Yes, um, I can make a motion to reconvene tomorrow at 2:00 P.M.
Second?
Madam Chair, I would, I would recommend that motion be to recess.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Reconvene.
Yes, recess and reconvene tomorrow at 2:00 P.M. Um, and that tomorrow is Friday, October 16th.
Councilwoman Dunaway made the second.
Yes, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
If, man, and could we just ask the public that if they stay on, you will, um, be able to announce the, um, the call-in number, um?
Yes, yes, I, I don't recall that that was part of my motion previously. But yes, we will make sure we put the information for the public.
I just don't want you, okay, and so if they stay on after you, after this motion is addressed, then they can, they can obtain that information?
Yes, so we will put it in the chat box, and we will read it aloud and also make sure that we are posting it on the council website.
And perhaps I would recommend that you wait, you wait to vote on the motion until, you know, you have that as part of your discussion and wait to vote on the motion until you made that announcement.
Okay, so is it in the chat box already? The information, can someone please put the information for rejoining the meeting tomorrow at 2:00 P.M. into the chat box?
Madam Chair, this is Chris. I'm calling Chuck just to make sure we don't make the mistake we made tonight, see who's gonna set that up. It will only take one of us a second to set up and get it in there.
Okay.
Hey, Madam Chair, I'm dropping the link into the chat box right now, and then as soon as I'm done with that, I will read off the call-in information for, um, tomorrow's continuation of this council meeting at 2:00 P.M. So the link is now in. Give me a second. I will read off the call-in information and access. The phone number for the audio version will be at 1-408-418-9388. The access code will be 132-791-6073. And here very shortly, I'll get this information from the IT department, and they will get it on the website. Does that work?
Yes. So I only see, Chris, though, that you put the link into the chat box. Are you gonna type the number in there as well?
Yeah, I'll put it in.
Please do. All right, so with that, um, am I missing something, Jen? Can we go ahead and do our voice vote?
I would just wait until Chris is able to type that number in.
There we go.
He's got it in.
Okay, thank you. Um, so again, the motion was to recess and reconvene tomorrow on Friday, October 16th at 2:00 P.M. Um, access information for the public is in the chat box, um, has been read aloud and will be posted on the St. Louis County website imminently. Um, so with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, we are in recess, and we will see everyone tomorrow at 2:00 P.M. Thank you.
Thank you.